We're going to do the pledge of allegiance for us this evening.
Cool shirts.
I love the shirts. And we have with us advisors, Mrs. Jamie Claussen and Mr. Ken Hooks. And we also have web leaders Vincent Cass and Ricky Holdwick. And also this evening, we are lucky enough to have a fabulous guest, Morgan Claussen, who wanted to join and do the pledge as well. For those of you that don't know, the middle school web leaders, these are our eighth grade students and it is a mentor program. And they mentor fifth grade students throughout the school year. And the web is where everyone belongs. And these two gentlemen right here are part of the group. And to become a web leader, the teachers at the middle school have to nominate you. And then the students have to show an interest after that. And then their information is given to Mr. Hooks and Mrs. Claussen. And then they pick the students from there. It is a great program. And I know that students that are in the fifth grade really benefit from this. It gives them a good idea to know what middle school's going to be all about from kids who have been there and done that. So we thank them for their work. And at this time, if we would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'm ready, you're ready, we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Morgan, you did fabulous, thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next is our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education to empower students to be successful in global community. Do roll call. Dan?
Here.
Jeff is absent with notice. Tracy?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
I am here, we have a forum.
Thank you. Next would be a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Kyle? It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our Board of Education Student Representative Report. Haley?
Okay. Well, to begin, I'll start with the elementary school. This past Wednesday was their margins reading month finale. They had their assembly. And I was actually fortunate enough to attend. So I got to observe firsthand of Mr. Manguni having eggs cracked over his head and Mrs. Broke having pies thrown in her face. And that was a lot of fun. I mean, the kids were enjoying it. They were all very happy. And it was really, it was really a fun time. I was very lucky to be able to go and observe that and be a part of that. Also, this past Wednesday, the middle school and elementary robotics team did a presentation that had the team demonstrating and answering questions about the robots they created. And Kay Kids will be visiting Leisure Manor this Thursday to read some poems and have some conversations with the residents there. Now, for the middle school. Recently, they had a talent show, or they called it a talent extravaganza. And it included musical pieces, dance, short film and animation, which is kind of neat. They didn't have that when I went to middle school. So that's kind of a neat addition they have now. And then a assembly was held where the students actually got to vote for which act they thought should win. And it was separated by category. And then there was an overall as well. So I thought that was pretty neat that the kids got to be a part of that. And the Richmond Middle School choir actually went to State Choral Festival today. You don't get a rating at State Choral Festival. It's more of like a celebration of making it there. So that was very cool for them to get to go and do that. And the student council and the science classes went on a campus cleanup on Earth Day last Friday to celebrate that. The high school, the Macomb County Academic Bank, will be Wednesday this week. Ashley Reese and Graham Barton will be honored there. Bye Bye Birdie is this Friday. Part of that. Friday is our opening night at 7:30, Saturday at 7:30, and Sunday at 3:00. Tickets are $5 for students, $8 for adults. And we're getting there. This week is pretty crazy for us, but I think we'll be ready. And Thursday, we have a preview show for the high schoolers where we actually perform the first three scenes. So everyone gets to know a little bit about it. So hopefully, we have a lot of support there. State solo and ensemble. Stephanie Graham and myself received a Division One rating. And Rachel Gerlis received a Division Two rating. So I would think that we represented Richmond pretty well at State Solo and Ensemble. Workshops and auditions for the color guard are going to be held soon, May 2nd and 9th. And so that's cool, getting more people involved in that, even if you don't play an instrument. So I think that's pretty neat. And prom is coming up. It's Friday, May 6th. So that week will have Spirit Week. And the theme is around the world, I believe. So I know we don't have Spirit Days decided yet, but they're going to follow that theme. So that'll be fun. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Haley. Next, Superintendent Legislative Update.
Thank you. There's a couple outstanding bills that they're actually looking at taking action tomorrow out of the committee. One would be Senate Bill 8620, which would in essence eliminate the college and career readiness standards for the state of Michigan and prohibit the use of an online assessment. What does that mean? Currently, our high school students take the SAT and the work keys test. This potentially could eliminate those assessments and allow the state to use an off-the-counter assessment to measure our students' progress. They also want to repeal the Michigan standards and adopt the Massachusetts 2009 standards in this bill. So just some things to watch about because it will have an impact on the high school particularly, as well as the state assessment, which we are currently in our second year of implementation of the state assessment. Other than that, there's no news on that third grade reading bill. And then the legislative committees will start May 2nd regarding building the budget for the fiscal year coming up. So within the next week or two, we should have more definitive numbers on our budget. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Hannah, can we buy tickets for the play early?
You can. And for that, you have to contact Mr. Finley. I know that he has tickets. However, they're just general admission. They're not assigned seating.
Okay. Excellent.
I had the good pleasure, I know Margaret, Brian, a lot of administrators were gathered this last Thursday evening to celebrate the Teachers of the Year for Macomb County. So congratulations again to Mrs. Durst, to Mrs. Smallwood, and to Mrs. Brown for being our representatives. It was great to be there to help them celebrate and to honor all the ways that they change people's lives because that's what teachers do every day. So it was good to be a part of that celebration. And I just would add, I guess, to the legislative update, just a little bit about paying attention, that the governor has decided to create his own education. I don't even know what he's calling it. But it's a 21-member group that he is appointing all the members of. And there then has been an initiative that has been put forth by legislators. In fact, our own representative, Goiki, has his name attached to a bill that would eliminate the State Board of Education with the idea that this governor-appointed group would be the group that would be doing all educational reform and our Democratic voted-in State Board of Education would be done away with. And in lots of ways, I think that that is very dangerous. And it, in fact, eliminates our democratic right. We have a right to vote for who we want to represent us at the state level on the Board of Education. So I would just ask for people to be aware of that, to be kind of checking in, seeing what's going on with that, and wonder about it and puzzle about it like I do.
Well, it's probably the movement towards the taking away the local control of school districts from local school boards, too. It's probably the whole idea.
A part of that movement that's been present for a number of years. I would agree.
Anybody else?
Hold the question.
Good job, Haley.
Good. Good.
Good thing you're on top of it.
The question came, is there a way we could put seats or benches in the hallway or near the entrances like the other school at the high school? This was a request that Mrs. Mashon had put in when we were doing our list of priorities for the bond and furniture as one of the items that we can purchase. So our next purchase is the furniture in the classrooms. And then after that, we'll be looking at the other items. So it is on the radar. And Mrs. Mashon is a big advocate for getting this for the high school.
I'll be sure to put that on the board.
Thanks, Haley. Okay, next is public comments. It's the portion of our meeting, if someone would like to address the board, they can come forward. You have three minutes. There is a card up there that you can put your name and phone number if you have a question that needs to be answered. It is not a question and answer period. It is just a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay. Moving on. Item 10, presentations. First one is the Pinconning Invitational Softball Overnight Trip. Mr. Stewart? Please.
I'm here seeing you for an overnight trip that we've been doing for several times. Softball games for purposes of competition. We're leaving Friday in the afternoon, going up to Standis Sterling, playing games, and then spending the night in Bay City. The next morning, we get up and we go to Pinconning and then we come back home on Saturday night. The cost is covered by the school. They'll pay for their share of the room. They'll pay for their meal. The transportation is furnished by Foster Oil. So there's no cost as close as an office. Any questions?
No. Thank you. Next. 2016-17 budget presentation.
Okay, for the last several weeks, we've been spending our time having a discussion on really some options as we build our budget for the FY '17 school year. Before you, I printed a copy of what's on the board, what will be on the board. I want to start by, there is no change in enrollment numbers at this point. More than likely, that change will start occurring really in June and probably in August when we usually get a bulk of the registration in. There is no change in the current revenue as the budget, the budget has not been approved by the state. And that will begin May 2nd with the revenue estimating conference on May 9th from the state. So once that happens, we'll have a better idea. I do know, again, I'll repeat, that both the House and the Senate are somewhat combined in the 120 per student that would affect Richmond. What we don't know is, is that unrestricted? Or is it going to have strings on it, such as 31A money and so forth? One of the, as I've been looking at the revenue and trying to find alternate sources of revenue or additional revenue sources, I think it might be something that the board may want to consider, at least looking at, looking at the activity fee. My first year here, their parents were limited to the number of activities that they could get reimbursed for after paying the activity fee. In essence, they left a check. It was a deposit. If they volunteered for so many, they got that deposit check back and so forth. This year, we went to an online payment system where you were paid at full and then we reimbursed you. Working with the boosters, we eliminated that cap. So what we had did as a district, and I want to thank Mr. Bordeaux and Mrs. Borwick regarding working with, from a district, what are the critical needs that we need for volunteers? And those are listed on our website. And so we reimburse families up to what they pay. And the boosters have a series of activities that they ask for volunteers, and so they reimburse. So it is possible, many of our families do get a large chunk of that activity fee reimbursed by the boosters. So one of the ways that we can look at is, and it would generate about $15,000, just on a rough estimate based on our current enrollment numbers, that if you took the high school to 150 and the middle school to 120, we reimburse for a volunteer activity for $15 for each activity. So that 150, 120 works out evenly. It would generate, like I said, about $15,000 in revenue. It is a cost for the parents on the front end, but we do have the ability, like I said, working with the boosters for them to get that back and not having a cost. So that's an option from a revenue standpoint. Now, what I like to do is look at the expense side of the organization. And the stuff in green is what I'm going to talk about tonight. That leaves, when we're all done tonight, two areas. One is the Schedule Bs, scholastics, the clubs, the groups. And one is the Schedule Bs athletics that we'll need to look at. So I'm going to start with looking at the four of these in conjunction. Number one, function code 118, which is preschool. I don't know if I can enlarge this. If you can see it, 118 preschool. Looking at 125, compensatory education. Looking at 212, guidance services. And looking at 241, Office of the Principal. One of the recommendations that you have before you is to eliminate the Director of Early Childhood position in the preschool line item of 118. Eliminate the Elementary Counselor in the 212 function code. Eliminate the Title I Academic Specialist Coach out of 125. Putting those three together, you can't just eliminate it without having another plan in place. So in 241 would be to put a full-time Dean of Students at Lee Elementary School. That Dean of Students, part of that person's salary would be paid out of the Title I savings that you would get out of 125 compensatory education. That person also would have to have the Early Childhood endorsement as part of a certification so that they can oversee the Early Childhood program. And so when you look at the savings on there in the red, you'll see approximate costs for those positions and approximate costs of adding those positions. Again, all the stuff that's on here is dealing with people. All right? When we get to the later part, I'll talk to you about the other part. Moving down the line to function code 221, Improvement of Instruction. That is primarily grants. It's staff development. There's no people involved in that. 222, Media Services. We net a $7,000 savings. That is a result of the position that was previously as a middle school media specialist retired last year. That position became part of the bargaining unit of the paraprofessionals and part of their contract. So there's a savings that will net because of that switch now into this year's budget that we would not have had if that person had not retired. 225, technology assisted instruction is the IT. I am not recommending with the one-to-one technology, amount of technology, that we eliminate any one of those three positions. They are a vital part of keeping the technology, especially the laptops and we're dealing with students. Things happen to laptops. They need to be fixed and repaired, and they are part of that. Line item 226, Supervision and Director of Instructional Staff. This would be a reduction of the Curriculum Director's position out of the budget. That's a part of the salary that's not charged to Title I. Line item, I talked about 241. Line item 252, Fiscal Services. That's a result of we had a retirement in the business office. And some of the savings on the benefit plan that that person had versus the new person resulted in a little bit of savings there. Line item 271, there's a $7,000 savings beginning July 1. All of our transportation drivers now become Richmond employees. We no longer use a third party. Through contract negotiations, the new contract that was settled provided some structural relief for us. So that will now, as I presented to the board with the contract when it was ratified several weeks, several months ago, that creates now a savings for us. The other programs such as Research and Development, Community Service, Staff Support, 284, there's no people necessarily in those. There is no people, there are no people in those items. 229, Other Support Services. 211, Community Services. A lot of that has to do with the title funds and the working dollars that we give to St. A's. So we just rolled over those, assuming they have the same people. When you get to 331, that's also Community Activities. That's with, a lot of it's with St. A's and title grants. 351 is a reduction of childcare personnel and associated benefits. What I'm recommending is we eliminate the during-the-day morning portion of the childcare. We don't have the numbers to sustain a person. It's actually costing us money to run that program. We would still run before school. We'd still run after school. We'd still run an afternoon daycare. Most of our kids attend the morning program. And then this would give them an option to go to the afternoon childcare after their morning preschool program.
That was 351?
351. 351, Custody and Care of Children. The others are, there's no people involved in it. So this gives you the summary of the people. I apologize for the audience, I did not scroll this up. So when you look at these right two columns, we've got two expenses. One is that with the six-period day, one versus seven-period day in the middle school. As we scroll down, with these reductions and additions in people in terms of being able to cover and meet compliance issue, we have anywhere from $316,000 to $511,000 in people reductions. When you look at the structural deficit we have of $337,000, keep in mind, this number here, in that pink area, the 221, is the projected structural deficit going into next year. So when you add this 221 and you add what we currently have right here, you're talking about $550,000. Each of these plans gets it closer. This gets us about $20,000 away from our structural deficit, but yet we have not addressed the projected structural deficit based on student enrollment and revenue, et cetera. Any questions at this part?
Just to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, the first column for expenses on the far right is with the six-period day? And the second one is with the seven-period day? Is that what you found?
The first column here, this one right next to the blue, is to continue the seven-period day with no changes to staffing. The second column, and I'm going to say this again, I've said it for a couple of times, it's no more than three. It's going to be something less than three, once the scheduling. The second column represents if we move back to the six-period day.
Okay.
Again, I just want to make sure, whether you start on your sheet, and I probably should have colored it in a different one. 118, 125, Preschool, Compensatory Education. 241 and 212, those four go hand in hand. And again, the person in that 241, they have to have the Early Childhood degree. They have to be, they would be overseeing part of the title, the title program. We only have one building in the district that is titled, so that would be part of their duties, which a portion of that salary would be paid out of title funds. The elimination of the Title I Academic Coach, currently that position does some PD coaching in the morning, a very small part. And the other part of the day, they work, she works with students. We have been approached by the Macomb Intermediate School District to be, if you recall, the budget, the governor and the Michigan Department of Education assigned or gave every county dollars to fund a literacy coach. The ISD has applied for the grant, has been given the grant. And Lee Elementary School has been selected by the ISD to be a recipient of that grant. Basically, what that would do is roughly three days a week, we would have a literacy coach that would be coming to Lee, whose sole purpose is to model in the classrooms, help plan with teachers, look at instruction, look at reading strategies, get the staff to a level of being comfortable. We have a lot of experienced teachers in that building. So I don't necessarily know if it's not, it's a knowledge base, but getting them together and planning and working by grade levels as well as, you know, learning some new techniques. Because we can all, we all learn. We never stop learning. So with that, that portion of that person's salary, and it is an employee of the MISD, would also come out of the Title I grant, which are anticipated, we anticipate we fully can fund that, what our fee or our bill would be for that person to come. The dollars that the state received was about, I think it was $37,000, $40,000 that they would, what the state views as an all-inclusive cost to a professional. And if you're looking at someone who has a master's or a background in reading specialist and you include FICA and retirement, all the other components, $37,000 is not going to get you very much. So the additional money the ISD is putting forward and then would be billing the districts on a per-day basis. So that bill that we would receive would come out of title funds. So we wouldn't lose that literacy coach. In fact, we'd gain more of it. And like I said, they have selected Lee to be a recipient of that grant. So I'm excited about that possibility. Other questions about the program here?
Can you talk to me a little bit about how losing, I mean, losing a counselor? I mean, I think it felt like, for those of us that have been on the board for a while, having that position at Lee felt like it was really important. So talk about how that position has been helpful, how that position has been useful, and what would happen if that position was eliminated, I guess?
The position we put in February of last year, and for a variety of reasons, the position has been not filled due to an employee absence. And so the services that we were expecting or what we wanted that program to happen hasn't come to fruition yet. And I'm not saying that it couldn't. When I looked at these combinations, again, trying to figure out, well, who would fill that void, one of the strategic things we did this year was we put Mrs. Borwick between the middle school and the high school. And as you guys know, she is probably one of the top-notch assistant principals, dean of students who, she's compassionate about kids. Though she doesn't have a counseling background, she is a counselor. And I don't mean to sound that minimal, but she works with kids. And I think the staff at Lee, as well as the middle school, because they had to adjust this year, that's what I'm envisioning, is that type of person stepping into that role. That's what I'm envisioning is that type of person stepping into that role so that we can address, number one, our first priority are the students with those right now needs. And if you think about it, when Mrs. Borwick is not there, it's Mr. Mangoni. And so if we have a student that has a meltdown and there's things that have to get done that day, those are all pushed by the wayside and we address the student. This would allow us to, especially those, I don't want to say hock, that's a totally inappropriate word, challenging situations there. So the person I would be looking for is, one, you know, if there could be a clone of Mrs. Borwick, I'd love to have a clone of Mrs. Borwick. And it may, Mrs. Borwick does not have the early childhood endorsement.
Right.
I'm sure both staffs would love to have her, and I know the middle school staff would love to have her back full-time. And she has done a remarkable job in what she's done. So that's what I'm envisioning, that position to be, number one, to address the issues we need to address, to continue the positive behavior. Because where Lee started two years ago and where they are now, they've come a long way as a building. And I thank, not only the leadership in the building, but the staff, they've stepped up, they have instituted a program that is really positive for kids. And so we need a champion to continue that. And again, I'm not saying the staff aren't the champions, but their first priority is the classroom. Like I said, that position, because it's paid out of grant, would oversee all the title funds, the implementation of the grant, the Title I program, much like Mrs., the Title I academic specialist that is there now.
Okay.
And then, I know it's been a vision of the board with the preschool, with someone with an early childhood background, at least they understand that we can hopefully continue to grow that program. Our numbers are up compared to where they were two years ago and we want to keep growing it.
I have two questions. So first, if we do decide the elementary counseling position is eliminated, I think it is a specialty, obviously counseling, especially counseling small children. So I would hope if this person, whoever we hired, doesn't have a background in counseling, that they would receive some training, supervision from the other counselors in the district, would that have a mentoring program if this is new for them? And even counseling from the high school to elementary is so different.
It is drastically different.
Yeah, so, I mean, even that doesn't quite bridge that gap, but I would hope that they're going to be getting some kind of training because with kids, it really is a specialty. You can't just do, you know, talk therapy with them. You've got to have a whole range of different tools. So that would be accounted for, I think?
And I think that's where the, working with the social worker over in that building, and we have got probably, I know we have two of the best social workers in the state, but that building has, you know, Jen Cleland, who is a phenomenal social worker, so is Mrs. Laratunda. But that partnership there.
Yeah.
Part of Jen Cleland's job is paid out of title, or excuse me, at-risk funds, so she can work with kids beyond just her caseload. I see the dean of students and this person really working in partnership.
Okay.
But definitely, there definitely needs to be training from a counseling type background.
Yeah, and someone who specializes in the little people, because that's important. And then my other question was with the literacy coach, is that right? Right now, the literacy coach is working one-on-one with the kids, right?
Her schedule, and I'm guessing it varies because everything, sometimes things come up. Her schedule is part of her day before the specialist or the peer pros come in, is she's scheduled to be working with staff and teaching, whether it's data analysis or whether it's helping plan or whether it's, and there are staff that have taken her up on it and it's been more of a, let's say voluntary, kind of, we're going to help you. And then when the peer pros come in, if you picture the triangle, the tier one is in the classroom, the tier two really, we've, the peer professionals that we have over there, and then the tier three are, is where she would work with the most at-risk kids and see if we can do some intensive, so.
So with the elimination of that position and taking the grant and having the people come in, they're working with the staff, but they're not working directly with the kids?
Correct.
So do the teachers have the time and energy? I mean, they can be trained, but do they have the time and energy to actually work with the kids to be effective, like our literacy coaches now?
In the classroom?
Yeah, because if that position's gone...
I would say every teacher in that building has some form of how they're specializing their instruction for the kids. Whether you walk in and you see, you know, a table in the back of the room and the teacher having five or six kids where she's working with them on literacy.
Sure.
Or you may see kids in groups and that teacher's working with a specific group they targeted for math. That's how they design their instruction. And each one does it a little differently because of the personality and obviously the grade levels. But I have no doubt in my mind that if I walked in to Mrs. Ranger's room, she could tell me every child who's struggling and who's not, whether I go into Mrs. Goddard's room, who are the high flyers, who are the ones that she needs to give a little extra attention to because they're not getting it.
Sure.
They may do it differently, but I'm confident our teachers know who that is. Not at the elementary school, but all the way up, but particularly at the elementary school because of the title program.
So the teachers shouldn't be overly affected if we did cut that position? It wouldn't add too much more to their plate, you don't think?
I don't think that the elimination of that position would add duties to the classroom.
Okay.
Because the duties that that position does in terms of working with the peer pros, identifying kids, collecting the data, putting them through the title program, measuring who's in, who's out of the program, who's exited, who's coming in, falls within the realms of that dean of students still, that would be required. Okay, you oversee in the title program, you got to make sure you're collecting the data and showing success, so.
Okay.
From the classroom, we might have to restructure some of the Title I aides in terms of if we want them to work with more intensely with a group of kids at that top end.
Sure.
But I think, I have every confidence that we can do it.
Okay. I just want to make sure it won't put too much burden on the teachers.
I don't, I don't think, I don't see that as a, that position shifting and giving another position from the county as adding a burden.
Okay.
The one thing that is, I'm sorry, just one more question. As an organization with the director of curriculum, we're going to have to think how that duties are shifted. There's a lot of logistical things that we do behind the scenes or that take on, so with the, with my administrative team, I'm going to be looking that they are, particularly the principals are the true instructional leaders that they want to be in the buildings, that they're kind of owning their building and those, that data. The caution I have is we got to continue to make sure that we have a aligned curriculum, that we don't have three separate buildings, that there is a connection between the three. That's going to be my charge or role to make sure that happens so that we don't become three independent schools. There's some logistical stuff, you know, just looking at the M step, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that took place. Now that we have the instructional or the specialist IT people, I'm going to be relying on them much more to do some of the background logistics and the testing. I probably more than likely will have one of them, as I'm going through all the components, be part of the ITAC, which is the County Instructional Technology Advisory Committee. And just to get information about what's going on out there to be on the front end of it. You know, when the MY step started, we did so much in advance. I can't speak today because we did have some snafus today, but it was snafus across the state. But we did so much in advance that it really started very seamlessly where other districts, their systems are crashing. We didn't have that. And I think that had a lot to do with not only the principals and the curriculum, but bringing in the IT and getting everybody in the room to discuss it and kind of plan for what to expect, so.
So Brenna, just to tell you that when I first came on the board, one of the votes that I regretted the most was the elimination of a curriculum director. And so I watched curricular things not remain refreshed every year, not, we did not stay with a current kind of system of it's the science year this year and next year it's the social studies year and next, that that person is the person who keeps us on par with doing that. And so if we are about curriculum, which is, that is what we are about, eliminating that position, I just am not sure that that's the best move forward. And it means that what are you going to eliminate from your current plate because you're going to have those responsibilities? So what are going to come off your job duties so that you can take on what I assume is going to be your responsibility with curriculum?
Well, I think the good news is, that's my love and passion. So it's not something that I'm going to see as additional work. However, as with any of these changes, I'm going to have to sit down with my team and say, okay, let's look at these, let's look at the duties. What are we shifting to other people? We started that process, you know, in August, one of the plan, or one of the training that I have for the, my administrative team is, you know, the basic, because they get the calls from the teacher when their systems are down, the heat's not working. So I'm going to give them an overview training. Here's the first step. If, how you log in the system, here's some problem solving, see if it's working. If it's not working, then we bring someone else in. Right now, I'm doing that because we haven't done through that, gone through that training. But there's a whole list of other things that we're going to have to look at. And shifting some of the duties that I have to my staff, to, if it's a clerical function, to one of the secretaries of the building that we're going to have to look at. I guess my point of putting on here is, from the day one when we started this process, which I think was at the beginning of March, I tried to be as transparent as possible. Here's all of our options of everything out there. And I started in the classroom to try to protect that. Some of these, it's not my ideal situation, but I'm just trying to address what we're at. So I don't have an answer for you at this point until we figure out what's been approved and how are we going to function as an organization? Because there's really, and I'm going to quote someone who has said this to me for six years prior to coming here, there's really only three options we have. We either get more money from the state, we reduce programs or services for kids, or we reduce the cost of employees. And when you think about it, that is our only option. So when I propose, do we raise the pay to participate fee to 150, 120? Now that we have a mechanism in place that parents can volunteer multiple times, they actually get it reimbursed, that's a way of raising money. You see in on here a result of the media services and the transportation restructuring contracts. So that we didn't address, I can speak to the transportation, we didn't hit any of their pay. They stayed their pay. In fact, they actually built in an increase, but they gave up things that were different. So from that, you know, that's where we need to be creative with all the groups that we deal with in the organization. The childcare, there's a parent that if we choose to eliminate that morning childcare, that we're going to have to call and say, your child no longer has a place to go in the morning because we don't have that services. So we're reducing a program and services for kids. I guess what I've been trying to instill in the organization is there's no one person that makes up the organization, we all do. And I keep asking, I keep requesting, I will sit down with anybody who wants to sit down with me and just talk about this. We got to put our minds together, be creative on this if we want to protect what we're in the business about. You know, I'm finalizing the bills for facility use. I don't know if we're going to get the anticipated revenue that we expected. So when, I mean, that's just one piece of the puzzle. You know, we're looking at special ed, I propose an increase because we need it, based on the needs of our kids. We have to, we have to increase that category. What you're going to get next, or meaning, oh, I'm sorry.
So, being transparent, am I hearing you say that by throwing out the idea of eliminating the curriculum director position, that's not really what you think is the best idea? You're being transparent and throwing out all ways to save money, but you don't necessarily think, am I getting that vibe or not?
I guess I'm approaching it this way, and Tracy, you said it, we're about kids, we're about instruction. Teachers in the classroom have so much they have to focus on in the classroom. We need a champion in the district who understands curriculum, who can see the writing on the wall when the state's going to propose eliminating the work keys and M step, or M step testing, and go to a non-connected to your, assessive, is not connected to your standards, and has been in a meeting where they've talked about using the NWA as our state assessment, as one of the conversation. If you're not part of those dialogues in the front, you don't see that until you react. So it would be almost like Google saying, we're going to eliminate our tech department. They're all about technology. Am I for it? No, because that position needs to grow. But it's an option we need to look at in the bigger picture. What this is going to require, and it's going to expedite my, when I came here in October 14, I created that vision, that plan. One of my visions was to have a dean of students and a principal at every building. The principal focusing on the instructional aspect, the teaching and learning, the assessments, the curriculum, the evaluation piece of it, that the law has now required us to do much more than we've ever done. And then the dean of students focusing on the positive behavior, the other part of the organization that makes up that triangle. And the two really are blended. There's no, there's not really a distinction between them, but they have a focus. And then each of the dean of students has another areas, whether it's athletics or early childhood and Title I. With that plan, because we were in transition with the principal at the time of Lee Elementary School, one of my visions was this, is when we have a solid team and Ms. Michonne and Mr. Bartels are part of that solid team, and Mr. Mangoni was this year joining us, but we have some transition that we've got to work through now. Once I had that solid team and that team is solidified together and curriculum instruction, the intent was to remove the director of curriculum.
Right.
I'm expediting that a little further with the expectation that I'm empowering my three principals next year to be the curriculum leaders that I believe they are, that they can be, and I think they step up because they're passionate about the building. They have no problem speaking up against something I have or for or against, and I appreciate that for them. But you're right, I'm expediting that plan. If I had all the positions filled at least a year under my belt, I would feel a little more comfortable eliminating that position, but I don't have all the positions filled. We've got some transition happening.
So you've built that into this budget?
If we said, you know, that isn't an area that we wanted to cut...
Which, the director of curriculum?
The director of curriculum, yes.
So then I would take out that line item for that piece. And again, that, when you look at any one of these figures, they're an estimated total cost of employees for that portion. Some employees are split between positions, so they're charged to other areas of the budget.
Right.
So you're right. That would be $86,000 roughly that we would have to find. So this would swing this way to about $100,000, and this would bring us down to about $90,000. And what this doesn't address yet, which is what we're going to start next week, is the line items of all of the, you know, substitutes, supplies. You know, we've got, we have a payment, and when you look at this debt service payment, we have two more years of a payment on an energy bond. That payment goes up next year. We're paying $135,000 for that energy bond that was passed, I think in 2006, but don't poke me on the year. quote me on the year. We have, next year's payment and one more year. Next year, it's $145,000, the following year goes up to $150,000. So that's a new expense, a little bit more. We have an election expense next year, it's about $10,000. We have to make a decision whether we're going to go to the voters and renew the non-Homestead Millage, which was passed in 1998. And so that's an expense of those, that election cost. So there are some new costs that aren't even in here yet, that you're going to start seeing next week when we start looking at the line items. We have, five years ago, again, don't quote me on the date, I'm estimating these, we had a buyout. This year, we're making the last payment. It's about $6,000 that we have. So that payment won't be in next year's budget, but we still have a severance package that's still in the budget for a couple of years. Just trying to think off the top, I had some of the things. So we have some new expenses, and we have some going away, and it's a juggling. And then from last week's meeting, we have the whole healthcare issue. I mean, it's 16%, 17% in some cases, healthcare increases that aren't in here yet because this shows taking people out of the organization. What's left on the map, which is, again, what I'll show you tonight and then going into next week, are all the people who are staying and those new costs that we have.
So I know you mentioned that this curriculum position, if it were, that we cut this position, that this would fall on the principals of the schools, correct? Primarily?
The curriculum, instruction, the testing and assessment, in essence, is going to have to go, to be to the principals. And prior to the position being here, I'm going to make an assumption, because I wasn't here, that that was part of the principal's duties before that. That, I think there was two people before, or one person before Mr. Burkmire. And just so that the board knows, with all of these positions that are out here in terms of people, because we talked in generalities at the classroom level up here, so I don't know who that person's going to be. But the ones that I talked about tonight, either I have talked to the person and said, I don't want you being surprised, this is going to be discussed, or it's going to be an item, or I've talked to the leadership of the union that that person belongs to, to at least give them a heads up that says it's going to be as an item. The only exception I will say would be the childcare because of the positions, some of them have like a morning during the day, some of them, I mean, it's kind of a unique setup, so I don't know who that person is going to be.
And how long have we had this curriculum director position in place? Two years?
I know Mr. Burkmire started in October of '13. It was the October prior to me starting here, and I don't know when the previous one started.
Previous to Mr. Burkmire?
Yeah.
Well, that was a minute. That was a minute position.
Sure. Okay.
And we hadn't had one before that in a few years.
I may sound like I'm trying to justify this, and I really, I don't want it to come across, it's just one as an option out there. You know, we do have a lot of connections, and that's one thing that is my belief, is we've got to work smarter, not harder. And there are people who have done this, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So connecting with the county, they are a great resource, that part of this is going to be relying on utilizing the county. And they're tapped, they're resources are tapped too. And again, I'm going to make, this, what we're talking about is assuming 120. If you look at these other ones, I'm talking that we have a new structural problem of 221, it could be as high as $510,000. But I, based on what I've seen from both sides of the Senate and the House, I'm very optimistic, but it won't be until the bill's signed. So next week, in the board packet, and we'll begin the discussion, you're going to get, and I will enlarge it for you because of the size of the font, you're going to get a summary of all of these function codes with what we've adjusted in the budget to begin with. So it'll look like this. And then you're going to get a packet that is roughly 79 pages. It is every line item in this district. It has every cost that we have charged to that account. So you're going to see, when you get to like supplies, FICA, retirement, you're going to see that all broken down by line item. And so when we look at this, some of it is discretionary, where we have the ability to move, some of it's not. Title grants, special education, IDA funds, we don't have the ability to take some out of supplies.
Will those be coded in a certain color or something?
That are.
You know Ryan really well.
What I will do is, on the left side of the document, and again, it will be enlarged so you can see it rather than this one, is a numbered line item, so that when we're talking about it, you can reference, if you look at like line item, you know, 197, it says supplies for graduation. Well, there's roughly, I think, $7,200 there. Well, there's, part of it's for the fee for the rental facility, part of it's for the diplomas, the flowers, all the other stuff. I'm just going to forewarn you. There are 8,678 line items on this, so it is a very.
Well, that's why I wondered if things would be coded, that there's just, there's no changing, FICA, there's no changing.
Correct. And that it says, it's coded in here. You'll see a list of staff members that fall under the, like elementary, you actually see all the staff members. And the way I have it set up is that if for some reason, Teresa, do you mind if I use you again? Teresa goes to teach at the high school. I can put a zero next to her name in the elementary school, and I can put a one next to her name in the high school, and automatically moves her salary and all the benefits over to that area. So when we talk about this, at the top here, realistically, I won't know who any of those people that are affected until after evaluations. And I'm going to make the assumption everybody's effective or higher, because if I have to reduce, and I'll just hypothetically, I have a teacher that's highly effective, and I have a teacher that's effective, the law requires us to let the effective one go before the highly effective. If I have a minimally effective over a effective, the law requires us to, when I have, all things equal, when we look at that final evaluation, then we can look at seniority. And that's another thing the legislators have taken away from local control to determine that, so. But I, this document, you know, we'll be finalizing, Vicki and I will be meeting to get all those numbers as accurate as possible in terms of the FICA, the retirement, and so forth. Other questions? This is, this concludes the people, other than the two that are in yellow, which is 219, which is Schedule Bs, which are clubs at each group, and then 293, which is athletics, which is, you know, coaches, supplies, referees, transportation costs associated with athletics, et cetera. So unless we're going to eliminate a program, we wouldn't be affecting people in these Okay?
Yep. Thank you. Next, moving on to our action items. First one is the Van Nuys choir overnight trip to Florida. This was the presentation that we had two weeks ago from Ms. Shack and Ms. Newman. There is a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight Orlando, Florida trip request as presented during the April 11, 2016 board meeting and in the attached documentation.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the MISD budget resolution. This was also discussed at our last meeting. It's where Kyle went and represented the board, the budget review hearing. There is a sample resolution, and whoever makes the motion has to read the resolution, please. Before we do that, I just wanted to make note that I have to abstain from this vote since I am an employee of the Macomb Intermediate School District. So that being said, there's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution and the attached documentation, and I read all of the wherestas?
Please.
Okay. Whereas, section 624 of the revised school code requires that not later than June 1st of each year, the board of each constituent district shall adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed intermediate school district budget. Whereas Richmond Community Schools is a constituent district of the Macomb Intermediate School District. Whereas the Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools during a public meeting has reviewed the proposed MISD budget for the next fiscal year. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. The Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools expresses its approval of and support for the MISD's general fund operating budget for the next fiscal year. The Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools directs its secretary to forward this resolution to the secretary of the MISD Board of Education.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I abstain. Motion carries. Next, resolution authorizing sale of vacant properties. Brian?
At a previous board meeting, Carol Walters came and talked to the board about options about, Carol Walters has been Coldwell Banker, who's done a lot of transaction, real estate transaction, or has done real estate transactions with the district. The property that we presented is up on the map and in your backup. Currently, if you envision, this is 32 Mile Road Division up here. There's a house that is in need of repair right here. There's a driveway that runs behind, I think it's a tax building there, and I can't remember what else is in that. And the old bus garage, and attached to the bus garage is a little office area, and then you have the odd. The district owns all of this property. So the resolution is to split, currently the property that the odd sits on encompasses the garage and the works there, so this area here. So the resolution is to take this property, split it into two, so roughly the line right here, and then this tax property right here would then be combined with this to create the property that would be for sale. Part of the agreement would have to be that this in the lease or in the paperwork of the agreement, an easement, that the odd has access to this driveway to get back here. The reason why we can split is because the odd does have frontage, or does have frontage property on M-19 Main Street. So what the resolution is authorizing me to pursue formally and legally, split the property, and then put this property on the market for sale.
Okay, there's a sample resolution. And no, you don't have to read the whole.
This one, I worded it a little differently, you didn't have to read the attach.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution for the sale of vacant property in the attached documentation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Can I make one clarifying point during this point? It doesn't mean that we are selling it. It's, you have, as a board, you'll be getting those, and if you don't want to sell it once you see what comes in, we don't have to sell it.
Okay, I will do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, school locker purchase.
In the December meeting, we talked about the, I'm going to call it phase two of the bond, and one of the items that we looked at was looking at storage cubbies in the elementary school and looking at what we offer the fifth grade. Currently, fifth graders keep their coats and backpacks on a variety of hooks that have been very creatively installed by, whether it's the building or the teacher themselves. In pricing out the cubbies, it would be about $52,000 to put cubbies similar to what's going in at the elementary school. So in looking at prices, we got a price of just under $15,000 to install 130 lockers that would be, if you envision the middle school and the media center, there are one side that has lockers, and then on the other side, it's open, that other side would become a locker bay. Those lockers would be primarily for fifth graders because the classrooms are right there. We can adjust the shelves so that they're a lower shelf for fifth graders to store their stuff, so that we give more room in the classroom. So before you, is a recommendation to approve the locker purchase.
Okay, there's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the middle school locker purchase from Duel Corporation for the amount of $14,971.64 for which funding from the 2013 voter-approved bond is authorized.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
When will they be doing this?
It takes eight weeks from the time that orders, so with, depending on your approval, we can probably get the authorization, I can send that to them verbally tomorrow, or at least in an email, and we get the PL started. So eight weeks, you're talking May, June, they're probably installing in July, which is about the same time when they're going to be installing the cubbies in the elementary school.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, a motion to adjourn the call session for purposes of negotiation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.[1769.37]